To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican virgin stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion. A little second. Aye.
We do have, there is one participant on the meeting. And that is Tom Ryan, so he's participating virtually.
Okay, okay. And then announcements.
Just for Tom, if you want to add anything at any point, just, do you know how to raise your hand on Zoom?
Can you unmute him?
Yeah, let me.
All right, and then, sorry. Approval of the minutes, consider approval of the following, January 30th, 2024, meeting minutes. I didn't notice anything, I don't know if anybody else came across anything. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, anyone want a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings, none, and then we're to general business. Direction regarding application for comprehensive plan amendment, RNF Properties LLC.
I'll be handling the presentation on this item, and I'm going to share a PowerPoint presentation. I'll give a presentation, and then, as noted, applicant Tom Ryan is on Zoom, so if he wants to add anything after the presentation. Just give me a minute to share my screen. Okay, the city has received an application to amend the city's 2040 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Specifically, it's a request to re-guide RNF Properties property located both south of Marketplace Boulevard, and a request to create a new land use district and re-guide a portion of their property located north of Marketplace Boulevard. And staff will be seeking planning commission feedback regarding the application as it's been submitted. And then your feedback will be forwarded to the city council. And the city council, if there's a consensus, they will give us direction on amending the city's comprehensive plan. This map just simply shows the city's comprehensive land use plan map that has been adopted. The comprehensive plan is a document that presents the city's official goals and policies for future development of the community. The plan identifies goals and policies for the physical development in areas of land use, housing, transportation, natural resources, parks, utilities, and economic development. Again, a request has been made to amend the city's comp plan, and this amendment is at the full discretion of the planning commission and city council. So I'll describe in detail the application that has been received. So Mr. Ryan, who is the owner of RNF Properties, who is the applicant, has prepared this concept development plan for his entire property, which shows how his property could be developed or redeveloped. Mr. Ryan believes that the highest and best use of the property that he owns south of Marketplace Boulevard is a combination of single-family residential detached and attached housing. This concept plan shows that the majority of the property south of Marketplace Boulevard being planned for single-family detached housing, approximately 35 acres, with a small area along France Avenue planned for single-family attached housing, depicted here as townhouses, which comprises about 4.7 acres. The area north of Marketplace Boulevard, Mr. Ryan is seeking some flexibility to develop that area as apartments and/or commercial, and to ultimately develop the property as it's depicted on this preliminary concept plan. A comprehensive plan is required and has been applied for. So as in the staff report that was included in your planning commission packet, I'm going to be describing the area south of Marketplace Boulevard, and then I'll describe the area north of Marketplace Boulevard separately. So the area, the south area is currently guided by the city's comprehensive plan to a combination of commercial and medium-density residential as it's depicted on the slide shown here. So the Elko Speedway area is all zoned commercial, and then the area just east of Whispering Hills is guided to medium-density residential. And that area would have, under the current guidance, it would have to be developed at five to 10 units per net acre. It'd be very hard to achieve that if the single-family detached product, it would almost have to be an attached product. The property, the entire property, as is outlined in red, is zoned PUD, and that's the PUD associated with the Elko Speedway. And that allows for, again, the Speedway, the outdoor movie theater, construction office, and some storage, and the temporary seasonal outdoor storage of recreational vehicles. This map depicts the request. The application submitted by RNF Properties included a request to re-guide the southern area, primary area south of Marketplace Boulevard primarily to low-density residential, and that small area along France to medium-density. You can see that much of the overall property is encumbered by wetlands, which reduces the developable area significantly, and these wetlands also provide a buffer to adjacent land uses to the south and the west. Note that even if the property is re-guided to residential, the current PUD zoning will allow the Speedway, movie theater, construction office, and seasonal storage to continue to exist until the owner seeks to amend the zoning for the property. Staff is seeking a recommendation from the planning commission regarding the proposed re-guidance of this southern area as depicted on this map graphic. Staff concurs that should this area redevelop and the Elko Speedway cease to exist, the property is, south of Marketplace, is unlikely to develop for commercial purposes as it's currently guided due to its proximity to County Road 2. Staff has conducted, staff has not conducted a detailed review of the concept plan. The concept plan was very high level, there's not enough detail for us to do, you know, a detailed planning review, but the concept seems reasonable as it's laid out. So feedback is being sought, we'll ask for planning commission feedback regarding the concept at the end of the presentation, but we'll be seeking your feedback on amending the comp plan to allow, to re-guide these areas. The northern, RNF Properties also owns a property on the north side of Marketplace Boulevard, and they're asking, have requested to re-guide a portion of the property that they own. This entire area is currently guided by the city's comprehensive plan to commercial. It's currently zoned PUD, it's a different PUD that specifically addresses this commercial area. The underlying zoning district here is B5, which is a general business district. It just allows for a wide variety of office, retail, services, restaurants, gas stations, kind of quite a few all-encompassing commercial uses. So the application that has been received is to amend the text portion of our comp plan to create a new mixed-use land use category, and then re-guide the area shown here in blue or turquoise to this new mixed-use district. In staff's recent meetings with Mr. Ryan, he expressed the desire to have flexibility to construct the, this area as multifamily, commercial, or mixed-use at his discretion, depending on what the market demanded, or if he had any sales or interest from commercial buyers. The city's comprehensive plan does not currently have a land use category that is a mixed-use district that allows this type of flexibility. We do allow some mixed-use in the city's downtown New Market area, but this would be, this would require a new land use category be created. If supported by the planning commission and city council, the city would, again, amend the comprehensive plan to add the text and amend the map to re-guide this area to mixed-use, and then we'd also amend our zoning ordinance to create a new zoning district, a corresponding zoning district. Just getting into a little background on this, the planning commission is somewhat familiar with this discussion because in January and April of 2023, Mr. Ryan and Beth have presented this particular plan to the planning commission and the city council. Again, this area is currently zoned for commercial B5, and this concept, the concept that was previously presented included a fully standalone multifamily building, the more U-shaped building here that I'm, if you can see where I'm, can't see where I'm pointing, but the more U-shaped building was proposed during those discussions to be 100% residential, multifamily. This concept also included this L-shaped building, which had been presented as being a mixed-use building with commercial on the main floor and apartments above, and then two single-use standalone buildings that had drive-through components to them. So the meeting minutes, in reviewing the meeting minutes, which I included in your packet, they do reflect support for the concept as it was presented at that time. But particularly the January 11th meeting by the planning commission definitely included discussion that there was support because there was a mixed-use component, and that there would still be commercials zoning. So that's really probably the major reason that we're bringing it back to the commission and council to reaffirm your support if that would be fully multifamily. So again, the concept has been revised. The layout included on the current concept plan is slightly different, and again, this is a concept plan, but we are seeking support for the concept plan. Building configurations have been modified slightly. You can see on the east, the L-shaped building is now just a rectangular building along France Avenue, and the commercial area has been repositioned somewhat. So the current application includes, again, the request to allow full flexibility in the area that's shown in pink for the applicant to do either fully multifamily, fully commercial, or a mixture of the two. Mixed-use districts in city's comprehensive plans are common. It's not unusual to see a mixed-use district. Sometimes they have a stronger emphasis on commercial, sometimes they have a stronger emphasis on residential, but allow some mixing. I just included some of the research that I did here, that the communities researched, all of the communities that I researched in their mixed-use district, they required a certain amount of land to remain commercial while allowing a percentage residential, and this table was also included in your report. And as the commission continues to discuss this issue, staff wants to just continue to point out that you consider, or ask that you consider allowing 100% multifamily here, just consider the loss of commercially-guided land in key locations of the city, the loss of pad-ready commercial sites in the city, location and visibility of the subject property adjacent to Arterial and Collector Street, which is good for commercial and good for multifamily residential, the availability of other high-density residential sites in the city, and as requested, the entire area in pink could potentially develop as high-density. And staff was seeking a recommendation from the planning commission regarding this re-guidance as depicted. Just also pointing out that the area in pink here is approximately 3.3 acres, and the area in purple is about 1.5 acres. And just for some quick comparisons, the post office site is 0.8 acres, Firehouse Grill site is 1.2 acres, so the area shown in purple would be about equivalent to what the Firehouse Grill property comprises. So I'd just like to, I'm proposing to break the questions down into a couple of different parts to make it maybe a little simpler, so seeking feedback from the planning commission first on the southerly area, or it might be appropriate to ask Mr. Ryan if he would like to add anything before we get into discussion?
Sure. Mr. Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Jake will need to unmute.
Hello?
Got it.
Can you hear me, guys?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and un-share my screen, if you give me a second, so we can see you better. Okay.
So, first of all, thanks for letting me meet in this, in this way. It would've been really hard for me to be back in Elko New Market at this time, so thanks for allowing this flexibility. And also Renee has done a great job explaining what we're, why we're here, and I think most of you saw this back in 2023. I think we were in front of the planning commission twice with pretty much this same concept. And flexibility is important as we start to move forward with this last four and a half acres of remaining property that I own within Elko Marketplace. There is still some open land that I don't know what the owners are going to do that's north, that's north of the post office. And then, of course, QuickTrip has got a parcel land that's just west of QuickTrip. We did a market study that we shared with you the last time we were here, and there was a clear and overwhelming need for apartment or that type of housing over a year ago. I assume that still exists for the most part. So our plan right now would be to, would try to build this apartment building, 40, 40 to 50 units, I'm not sure, really preliminary stages. But we learned the hard way last year and got the cart in front of the horse because you guys approved a 13-lot subdivision. And then we were stopped because we didn't have the correct guidance for that property. And so what we're trying to do is get this stuff in the right order and also do this planning well, well ahead of any future change in the land use, I'm talking about Speedway. So, and that being said, I guess I would just stand for any questions, if there are any from here on out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom, I'll go ahead and share my screen again and just zero in on the questions.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for Tom.
Okay. Question number one for the planning commission, does the planning commission support the re-guidance of the property located south of Marketplace Boulevard to a combination of low and medium-density residential and in the locations as depicted on this map?
You're talking like the green area, right?
The area that's outlined in red.
Oh, the whole thing, got it.
And this is the...
Can you go back to the first couple of slides where it has everything kind of laid out? There we go. I mean, I totally get what is being proposed, and I understand it, and for the most part, I probably support it. And I'll continue to say that we're lacking a lot of commercial businesses, and I know that that probably doesn't have to deal with this property, so to speak, but I mean, at some point, we've got to start developing commercial so people aren't continuing to drive north to the cities for work. And I'm just, the more and more we build residential and high-density or low-density, I mean, we've got to start considering whether that's subsidized businesses to intrigue them to move here, but this is something that we need to look towards.
I agree with you, for sure, so we're only talking about the lower half, right?
Yeah, for the first question, yeah, if we can, yeah, the part kind of south of Marketplace, everything that's outlined, I appreciate your comments, Casey, that's helpful.
So, and we're just talking about the whole, everything outlined in red, right? Not just that development?
I'm taking, yeah, the three pieces outlined in red, yeah.
Okay, and not just, yeah, not just the development itself, so we're just looking at the whole thing, right?
Outlined in red, yep.
I just want to make sure.
Yep, yep. And if you'd rather have me have the concept plan back up, but the concept plan could change. What we're really adopting is the land use, the designated land use that would guide future development.
Do we want to tackle this in three different sections?
Oh, we could, so...
If we start with the most southern part of it?
Let's do that.
I mean, I totally think that is, totally makes sense. 100%.
Okay. So the area that's currently guided, medium-density residential, there's really very little, generally speaking, developable because of wetlands and wetland setbacks.
Right.
And getting the road through there. It would be, I think what we learned from Tom's last development is that it would be impossible to, with a detached product, to achieve the densities for medium-density, so regiding it to low-density, you're in support of?
Yes, I agree, that makes sense, yes.
Okay.
Do we want to call it the medium-density residential from commercial, the little, little section?
The little one on the right?
Yeah, I'm assuming that's like the townhome area?
That's the townhome area that has been laid out?
Okay.
So that would need to meet five to 10 units per net acre.
I go back and forth in this in my brain. And maybe it's just, I'm trying to imagine it, you know, from, from France and driving into a neighborhood, but passing townhouses and all of that, and what it would look like. And I understand probably the reason for it being next to France is for traffic purposes, I would assume. Because that's where, my brain is just kind of struggling with how the layout would look. I understand probably more houses, more money.
I'm going to pop back up to this one, just to give you a visual on the current concept.
I remember at our last meeting, we kind of talked about, and I don't, I think Brad might have brought it up too, I don't recall correctly, that, like, why aren't the townhouses located more closer to, like, that other area, you know, the north side that we're going to talk about?
You're saying, yeah, it's like the northern?
So it's like more of a flow of how, all the houses together, and the townhouses, and then you've got the apartments or commercial up there.
I mean, that flow better.
So you're saying, your question, or you're just throwing out adjacent to Marketplace Boulevard, if that should be guided to medium-density either as well, or if it should be flipped?
Flipped.
Okay. Noted. The France Avenue, in the city's transportation plan, France Avenue up until about the entrance point shown there is designated as a collector street, a major collector, and then it goes off into a minor collector. I don't know if, Tom, you have any, Mr. Ryan, if you have any feedback regarding why you chose to place the medium-density in this location as opposed to closer to Marketplace?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't think there's really any magic to the, what we did there. Realistically, we're trying, we're trying to get some kind of density on the property, not really for financial reasons. Myself, I think it'd be just as easy to make it all single-family. The lake, we call Lake Elko, is quite an amenity. And so I don't, and again, this is a really, the concept could be changed. We can't criticize this sketch too much here because there has been nowhere near the right amount of effort or expense to designing a proper layout here. So I think, Renee, we were trying to get some density, is all we're trying to do. Not for our benefit, but for Met Council benefit. Is that, is that still something they'll be looking at in approving this? Renee?
Well, the Met Council does have to approve it ultimately, after, if the city chooses to amend its plan consistent with what you've requested, the Met Council does also need to approve it. But in our meetings with them, they'll, they'll bless what we approve. They're always trying to achieve density. And then any development that takes place within it just has to comply with our, whatever density we've adopted for those areas, specific areas.
So it's a big, it's a big area. It might be irresponsible to plan it all single-family. I do feel that's the most marketable, is all single-family. But, so we're trying to get some kind of diversity in the housing types in this area. So that's simply where we put the townhomes. Renee, can that be moved later on as we go through, as it goes down the road a ways?
It would require another comprehensive plan amendment.
No, you know, that just doesn't seem right to me, Renee, but...
Tom, I, I agree with you.
You know, I mean, it's, okay, so, you know, I don't really care what we do to this. These, they can be townhouses, if people want to move them around, I don't care. You know, do we, can we agree that townhouses belong in this piece of property, or do we want to keep it all single-family?
I mean, I would personally like single-family, but...
Okay. So do we want to make a recommendation that they're all single-family?
I get the, I understand the density piece of it as well. I get the, I understand the density piece of it as well, um... This is a tough piece of land to, to develop, um, which is limited. I think single family makes more sense, just so it's not so choppy with townhouses and, you know, and then houses all around it. It's just my two cents. But I, I do respect getting more density.
It's what, it, it's really what your recommendation is. If you don't think medium density is a good idea in that location, that's fine. If your recommendation is all low density, that's fine too.
I think for ease, single family would be...
I think it'd be a lot more marketable.
Easier.
I think it'd be a lot easier for Tom, if it was single family, to get residents there as well. I mean, just thinking of a, from a guy that lives in a townhome, and I respect townhomes, they're, they have a, they have a meaning. But, I don't know if I would want to buy a single family home in that development, being next to a bunch of townhomes. And that'd definitely be in that market of, hey, Tom, I want to be one of the first people to move over there, you know? So, but, I, I mean, I get, you know, as human beings, we tend to get over things.
Give an opinion, Joe, on, uh...
Personally, I think the single family makes the more sense just for uniformity, but, again, like they said, the density is important, but...
We have the land just to the east of there that could be used for that as well. I mean, I think, I think we're all saying the same thing, I think we should keep it single family.
Okay. So, that would be our recommendation?
Yes.
For that part, okay.
And I think that kind of sums up the big area.
First piece, right?
And you, yeah, and you support the single family on the other area that's currently the track? Tom, before we proceed into talking north of Marketplace Boulevard, do you have anything else you want to add regarding the medium density piece?
Uh, no, I don't, Renee.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, the next questions are, does the planning commission support the creation of a mixed-use land use designation within the city's comp plan? And, uh, the re-guidance of this property, uh, shown in turquoise?
I do support the idea of mixed use, because it's, we currently don't have that, right?
Correct.
I think that's a good idea, to allow some more flexibility, for sure. If you go back to the slide with the chart of the other cities, I guess I, this one, thank you. And you said some of them have restrictions on like, or limitations on how much? Can you explain that again?
You can see in the right column? The max, or the minimum share of residential?
Maximum share.
Maximum share allowed.
Some are minimum, some are max, yep.
It's a minimum, commercial is the, is the inverse, so...
Like, is that something?
That's something you could consider?
Okay. Like, so then, like, it'd be maximum fifty percent, like, commercial, right? Like, half, half, or seventy, thirty?
Yeah, and we would, right, so we would just be, if that would be the case, we'd just be looking at that ground floor. If you had a mixed-use building that was commercial on the main floor, that would be counted as commercial.
Right.
And if you had a multifamily building that was multifamily only, that would be counted, counted as residential.
Okay.
If I understood the presentation correctly, I think he, he would have the option of, either one of those apartments would be...
That was the request, as it was submitted to the city, that, um, and I would, uh, request that Tom maybe, uh, word it as he did in our, in our staff meetings, um, he would like the flexibility to do fully residential in these two buildings. Or maybe a combination, at, at his discretion, depending on market conditions at the time.
Sure.
I would one hundred percent, yeah, I would one hundred percent support that, because if he wants to make it all multifamily, then that's, that probably makes a lot of sense, especially if you have those other two buildings that could be some type of...
Yeah, I get that. I think of, um, you know, it's on this slide, actually, the lots of pad-ready commercial sites. That's one thing that's clicking in my head. And the location, I guess, for a commercial, but, but, yeah.
I'm a little fuzzy, now, we're only talking the pink area, not the pink and the blue. So, the blue would be commercial regardless, okay?
Okay.
And then, I know this is not pertaining to this, but the property just to the north, that is commercial.
As, uh, as Tom mentioned, there is a roughly an acre, I think, uh, to the west of the existing QuickTrip site that they own, that they didn't develop. And then there's an, uh, one additional site on that corner.
Okay. I think the mixed use makes sense.
Yeah, agreed.
Other comments, good?
Okay, I'm going to, um... Okay, so if you support the, uh, mixed use and the reguidance of the property, does planning commission support flexibility to allow high-density, commercial or mixed-use development at the discretion of the property owner, without setting parameters of?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's a yes from Joe, a yes from Casey?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa, who, uh, was, um, not able to make it tonight, she sent an email in on this comment, I'll read her comments into the record when we're done here. So, yeah, the final question was, is the planning commission recommend a per- minimum percentage of residential versus commercial? And so, what I heard from you is, no, there's no...
I could go either way, but...
Yeah, I mean, I just think...
I'm okay without it, I'm okay with it.
The last thing I want to see is, you know, square footage not being used because the resident there, the commercial does not catch on, I guess.
Okay. Read Melissa's notes. She, uh, Melissa states, "I support re-guidance of the property south of Marketplace Boulevard to allow for low and medium density residential. I appreciate the strategic, thoughtful future planning for the property. And secondly, I support the creation of a mixed-use, uh, land use category. From a planning standpoint, I support plans for a more walkable community. Having mixed-use, uh, land use category that can have both residential and commercial retail components is desirable, uh, to many. And, um, I do not support a combination, um... I'd support a combination of residential and commercial, but I'm not sure as to what the right percentage of each is."
Right, and that's kind of where my question was, I wouldn't know what the right percentage is either, um, if we went that route. But I, I could take it or leave it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I just think about in the future, for future developments, if, if that percentage would be necessary or needed. So, we don't lose our commercial. That's just where my brain's kind of going.
It, it really seems like it's all over the board, um, in different communities, so...
I know. I mean, can we give that caveat to the city council of, we're for the mixed use, we're unsure if we should set parameters on it or not? I, I don't know.
Can?
I'd, and see what their thoughts are, or if they have any concerns about the commercial?
Uh, we can do that, and we can express that there is, was maybe a split, I mean, at this point, it's a two to two.
Yeah.
To fully support complete flexibility and two around the fence.
Yeah. I guess I personally wouldn't know, like, it shouldn't be forty percent or sixty percent, or what that would actually look like?
Sure. So, I think that, um, yeah, again, this, um, last slide is just, you know, this is the city's comprehen- this is, uh, the comprehensive plan is a city document, um, outlining the city's goals and policies. And, uh, amendments to this plan are at the full discretion of the planning commission and city council. So, I think that we have what we need, I don't know if we need to put it in the form of a motion, or do you think that, um, we can?
I don't think so.
Okay, so for the minutes, which will be forwarded to the city council at their next meeting, and this will be on their agenda for, um, consideration at their next meeting?
When is their next meeting?
Uh, the fourteenth?
Okay.
Fourteenth of March.
Okay.
I think I heard loud and clear what your recommendation was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we go on to...
Tom, do you have any additional questions?
No, I think, I think everything, we talked through everything fairly well.
Okay. The city council meeting, um, the fourteenth, I don't have the exact time, it'll either be six o'clock or seven o'clock. And that would be available for virtual participation as well, if you are out of town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, general business, detached accessory building research.
All right, I got a presentation here for you, let me share my screen. A little background in history, um, so semi-recently, we had a resident inquiry. The resident lives in Old Elko, so it's actually an R2 small lot district. Most of those homes do not have an attached garage. So, his property has an existing detached garage, and he was wanting to build a new detached accessory structure for extra storage. Unfortunately, he was unable to, as city code does not allow the resident to construct, uh, a new detached accessory structure, uh, they're limited to one per property, according to city code, as shown there, except by conditional use permit. Um, so the resident inquiry... Um, this, basically, he brought up the fact that this allows those with attached garages the ability to have at least two hundred fifty to one thousand more square footage of storage than those with detached garages, which, um, in his mind, is unfair. Uh, so here's our city code, which details that a little further. If we split it over, uh, if you have an acre or under, you can build a two hundred fifty square foot, um, detached accessory structure with no conditional use permit, you can go up to a thousand square feet with a conditional use permit. Over an acre, it's a thousand, without, and then fifteen hundred square feet with a conditional use permit. Just a little background information there. Also, some past complaints and comments staff have received over the years complaining that the city's standards are too strict regarding allowable, um, detached accessory structure sizes. The current standards are shown here below. Again, we just went over those. Staff did research of other cities' codes. Um, the research was focused on the size and number of structures, as well as the specific standards relating to structures within business or industrial zones. The research did not take into consideration the conditional use permits, um, as those may be denied for many different factors. It's also meant to give the commission and staff a guideline for providing further feedback and recommendations on potential ordinance amendments. So, here, um, this is just other cities, what they allow for number of structures and max square footage.
As you can see, most cities do allow for multiple structures, um, either total square footage limit between all the structures, or saying, saying one's allowed, but if you have two with detached garage, um, it's very common. And we are seeing that we're pretty small compared to other cities without a conditional use permit, we're at two hundred fifty square feet. The only one smaller than that would be Burnsville, two hundred twenty-five square feet, and that's only if you have an attached garage. If you have an attached garage, you can go to a thousand in Burnsville, so we're on the small side there. Uh, and the research on commercial and industrial districts showed that we're more or less in line with other cities. In our commercial districts, um, most cities allow accessory structures, not greater than thirty percent of the principal structure footprint. In industrial, in our B6 zone, which we don't really use, um, then also in our industrial zone, I would say we're more gracious towards, um, accessory structures, they can go up to fifty percent of the gross floor space. So, fifty percent of an industrial building, that's a, that's a pretty big accessory structure they'd be able to build. Uh, so staff's recommendation might be to change the fifty percents to thirty, to keep it more consistent, um, what other cities allow. A lot of cities do not allow them within their industrial districts at all, and I think the thinking is that the initial building can incorporate that storage, so they don't have to build a garage.
Uh, so staff are recommending the planning commission consider amendments to the city's accessory structure ordinance due to the following factors, uh, resident inquiries, past complaints and comments received, increasing size standards in other cities, and regular review and updating of the city zoning ordinance. If changes are recommended, or recommend, recommended, sorry, staff will draft an ordinance amendment for further discussion at an upcoming meeting. So, I can flip back to the standards if you want to look through any of them closer, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to make some changes, I'm not sure how others are feeling about that. I mean, looking at the, this table, um, when I first reviewed it, I was like, wow, we're, we're way different. Considerably. I was surprised.
I mean, a standard, single garage door is eight foot nine inches. Then you allow for some side room, so that's going to give you at least a minimum of thirteen foot width. If you want to put an eighteen foot trailer in there, you're going to have to be well over twenty-four feet long.
Yeah.
For like a boat, so, we definitely got to do something different.
I think, I was shocked when I started working here that it was two hundred and fifty square feet, I thought it was really low. I, the only thing that I could, uh, come up with was that the city was specifically trying to prohibit detached garages, or, you know, in it.
I think so.
At the time, and maybe only allow a, a garden shed. That was my thinking, I, I don't have any history on it, yeah, on that, or how it got to be two hundred and fifty square feet. So, yeah, two hundred and fifty square feet is going to be more like a garden shed, or maybe a little bit bigger than a garden shed, but...
But not much. So, is the city looking for like recommendations on size or what to do with?
Yeah, basically, just the highlighted there, what our current standards are, if you recommend changing the, you know, the first column, the second column, or both.
Sure.
That'd be helpful, and obviously, if you want to increase, or hopefully not decrease.
So...
Hundred feet.
With, just thinking, um, so with setbacks and everything, so if we did like total square footage, right?
Yep.
And they'd have to meet within those setbacks?
Yep.
Right? No matter what?
Setbacks is guaranteed.
Right. Because I'm seeing like, uh, Lakeville, right? That one just sticks out to my head here. Um, one plus one attached slash detached garage, um, and then it's determined by setbacks, if that property allows that structure.
So, yeah, if you have a big enough lot, you can have a, a bigger garage, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, makes sense.
I mean. I don't know what others are thinking. Me and my brain doesn't really do square footage and how big it is. And if a property allows a bigger one, why wouldn't you allow the bigger one based on if it meets the setbacks?
And I'm just throwing, not, I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I'm just throwing out some other things for consideration that, you know, in a residential neighborhood. If everybody had a thousand square foot garage, would there be probabilities that people would try to run home extended businesses out of their garages? Or do repair work that's not allowed by our code? That may have been another reason for setting a low limit. You know, there are probably covenants in some of our existing neighborhoods, I'm guessing like in Glen, the Glenboro area. Boulder Heights or Boulder Point, their covenants might not allow larger garage detached garages.
Actually Boulder Point doesn't allow any accessory structures.
I don't know what you're.
Our rear setback for detached accessory structures, the setback is ten feet and the side setback is ten feet. So you can put them in your backyard, except outside of any easements, that would be greater than that. Also, every property you can only have one driveway. You're only allowed one curb cut into every property, so you couldn't, you know, have a separate driveway for another garage, just say. To access it through your existing yard or existing curb cut. Absolutely.
Yeah, code actually requires detached garages have a driveway.
I don't think so.
I'll have to double check that.
Yeah, well, maybe can be part of the research if we bring it back.
I go detached garages.
Yeah, not a shed.
Oh, you mean a driveway to it, not a separate curb cut?
Correct.
Would you agree that the code only allows one curb cut?
So what are we, what are we thinking for total number of structures allowed? Want to base it off of kind of another city where it depends if they have a attached garage or detached garage in the first place?
You think like Jordans would be a good one to go off of there?
Yeah, Nicole, just for kind of reference, this room is about eight hundred and forty square feet. Perfect, that's what my next question was gonna be. There's, I'm just on Monards' website, I mean, everything's, there's a big range, I mean, there's like twelve to twenty feet. For width sixteen by twenty-four, but.
And then eight hundred and forty, obviously square feet would have to meet still with the most setback, so if they can do it, they can do it, if not, then they can't. But they could maximize their space.
If I had a garage this big, I'd buy some cows.
Okay, so max square foot, we're thinking bigger. Are we thinking bigger than anything that's on the list or is it kind of fall in line with other cities?
Thousand square feet seems like a lot, doesn't it?
It seems pretty big.
Especially, yeah, because you already have an attached garage, in most cases it's a thousand.
The structures though, in that column on the right of the two.
If you have an attached garage, that doesn't, that's not included. Attached garages, you can go up to a maximum of one thousand square feet. So that's an oversized three car.
So if you, okay, now I'm confused. So if you have attached garage and you wanted to do an additional one, right? You could go up to eight hundred and forty square feet or not, because you would already be over it.
Attached garage is taken out of the equation, they don't count. We're only talking about detached accessory structures.
Right, but like in Jordan, you could do an eight hundred and forty square foot garage, but in but in some of them, it's the total square footage of all of, like Lonsdale.
You could have three buildings that equal eight hundred square feet. Combined.
And none of these are, none of these address the attached garage. This is in addition to the attached garage.
So it sounds like not higher than a thousand. But we can bring back some kind of examples that show it on a map or something so you can get a better idea.
I wanna, you know, be very mindful of this, because I know this is very important for people.
I think so too, I don't think we need to rush this, we can take multiple meetings to review this, but I think that's a great idea to take some surveys and superimpose.
What does it look like with detached cars and attached cars and what?
And we'll use examples in both the older areas of town that have small lots and then a newer area.
If we can find surveys for those ones.
That would be, that would be helpful, I wanna be, yeah, like I said, very mindful of this, because I know this is very important to a lot of folks here as well. I think it, once this starts, this might start like a whirlwind if it's.
How big a potential, how many really homes don't have detached, attached garages now?
Pretty much just an old Elko.
Maybe a couple in Old New Market.
Yeah, downtown.
Not too many.
I mean, ultimately, we're gonna be limited to what you can put in your backyard, so.
Right, yes, but.
For a lot of people.
Right. But again, I just really want to be mindful of it, because I know people have stuff.
Since I've started, that's probably been one of the most requested things people call about is increasing their garage, basically to fit, you know, a new camper. Everything's getting longer, so.
Everything's bigger.
Trucks even don't fit in some garages here.
And it's also.
Where I was going with my, I was like, I know, I'm tight, that's twenty-one feet.
Yeah, and it's probably become more of an issue or more of a question because we're enforcing the recreational vehicles being stored on.
Outside or out of season?
Out of season, not in your driveway.
Yep, so that'll help with that and give people some more storage. So our commercial and industrial, we do allow them currently. Do we want to continue to allow them in commercial and industrial zones or one or the other? And then if so, do we want to change the percentage requirements that we already have?
I was really surprised about the industrial one. Considering, I'm thinking of like a big massive building, and why do they need this big additional?
Toxic or flammable materials perhaps?
This was also created in two thousand and six, when really the only industry in town, I mean, we still don't have any industry in town. It's the township, so it's, I don't know if they were imagining, you know, Ryan properties when they were creating this.
Commercial, I could. Commercial, I think, seems right in line, maybe, what do others think?
Yeah, and I'll stress that B six one isn't very important, because we don't utilize our B six zoning district.
It's like borderline industrial, it's a business park district.
Which I think that would make more sense than an industrial to have that space for things.
I think the industrial should have more space, because otherwise you're gonna get really irritated when people start putting stuff outside that they shouldn't. Go drive around Lakeville and Burnsville.
No, I'm open, I'm open to whatever, I mean, do you think it's fine? I don't know.
I think it's fine.
Like, leave it for now or maybe get pictures, I don't know.
We can bring back some pictures from other communities roughly, and that would be close to, you know, a fifty percent structure on a site like that, so. Try to get some images to bring back. Sounds like those are the three main questions I had, if you guys had anything else you'd like to address with the ordinance or have staff look at further?
No, I'm glad it's brought up, so.
Yeah, thank you, we'll bring back something to the next meeting.
Alright, and then we're on to miscellaneous cannabis regulation updates.
Included in the packet was a memorandum from the city attorney from Campbell Knutson. Campbell Knutson represents many cities, so this was just their standard that they sent out to all the cities. Kind of the key points at this time was they believe no action is currently necessary under the legislation. Our licenses wouldn't be available until early twenty twenty-five. I think there might be some changes to that, they, I think they might be thinking there might be some licenses available earlier now. So I think this is just gonna be, will be continued to be updated on this, especially now that we're in the legislative session. Yesterday, so also the legislature or the Office of Cannabis Management was to draft model ordinances for cities to consider for adoption and I think they are running behind schedule on that, so. We were advised yesterday that the League of Minnesota Cities is gonna be drafting model ordinances on behalf of the cities. They're seeking input from city planning departments at this time. Brandon and, Brandon is kind of the key staff person at the city is gonna be handling this, so do you have anything to add? You probably know more about it than I do.
I would just add that it's all really fluid and I'd say nobody knows, especially the Office of Cannabis Management, when anything is gonna get released yet. So there are talks of the licensing being moved to middle of twenty twenty-four rather than twenty twenty-five. My opinion is that that probably wouldn't happen, but they're very clear on their DEI. So diversity, inclusion people, so I think that's a big key as to how this goes and when those people want to, want to start applying and how the like tiers go. Based on that, but otherwise, they said model ordinances by the latest middle of summer. So I think that's something we can count on at least and that'll be, that's the big next step for us at least.
And then comprehensive plan overview, chapter five, demographics.
Yeah, that's me too, now we're getting to the good stuff. So as you guys know, Tom, Terry wants us to, Jake and I to share one chapter at a time per meeting. Don't need any action or recommendations, just educational, obviously. Alright, so today we're on chapter five, which is demographics, trying to see if I can do presenter view, perfect, alright, cool. Alright, so why do we care about demographics here in our positions? It's because in order to analyze future housing, parks, recreation and pretty much everything else, it's important to, excuse me, to review historical trends that have occurred and develop realistic assumptions as to how our population is gonna form and future growth of the community. So demographic information provides a base which we will use to identify issues in planning policies. And with the help of a solid informational base, decision makers like yourselves can evaluate and guide us more properly. So disclaimer to this presentation is that the twenty forty comprehensive plan was created in the late twenty teens. So that being said, there had yet to be a twenty twenty census. So some of the numbers within these graphs are out of date, but I mean, this is what we thought at the time. Obviously COVID threw a big wrench into everything, including demographic trends, so just want to throw that out there. So as you can see on here, the two thousand showed a huge boom in population for the city. This was of course due to the using, the housing boom that occurred during, before the bubble burst in two thousand eight. But a four hundred percent increase is extreme growth even during this economic booming period, which was occurring nationwide. The most recent population estimates sent out in July of twenty twenty-two estimate our population to be at five thousand and twenty-four. This slide represents the age of population, so the city had a median age, a median age of thirty point nine in two thousand compared to a median age of thirty point four in twenty ten, so getting a little bit younger. And that's much younger than the average, Minnesota average and United States are both thirty-seven, so we're seven, six or seven years below the average. Yeah, yeah, and rising. This table summarizes the race and ethnicity of Elko New Markets population in twenty ten and twenty fifteen. As shown, most residents were white and not Hispanic or Latino. From twenty ten to twenty fifteen, we became slightly less diverse, but I think it's pretty safe to say for the last since twenty fifteen, the last nine years, we've probably become slightly more diverse, even if we're still very white. Household income, so the table provides a summary of Elko New Markets twenty ten household income as well as a comparison of household income to Scott County for the same year. Per the twenty ten census, the greatest percentage of households in Elko New Market, thirty-seven percent, had household incomes between a hundred thousand and a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Yeah, overall, this chart displays that we're a pretty well-to-do community. The ta, this table displays the median household income for the city of Elko New Market for twenty ten, twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, as well as a comparison to Scott County. As shown, the median household income in the city in twenty fifteen was one hundred and five thousand with some change. And this income figure was notably higher than the median income for Scott County at almost eighty-eight thousand. The higher median incomes in Elko New Market compared to Scott County can likely be attributed to the age of the city's population, most of Elko New Markets population consists of adults and older adults ages thirty-five to fifty, so. Most adults reach their peak earning years between the ages of forty-five and fifty-four. Employment, so this table displays projected employment growth in Elko New Market and how it relates to Scott County. The Met Council overestimated our employment growth largely due to COVID, like I said. But I thought it was still worth presenting as it is part of the twenty forty comprehensive plan. The bottom table, the bigger one on this slide, displays occupations of the city's workforce as provided by the US Census. The table indicates that education, professional and retail jobs were the most predominant occupations for the city's residents. And the twenty fifteen estimates are essentially the same, they include education, manufacturing and retail jobs. So education and schools, Elko New Market is unique in that it has two school districts located within the city limits. Lakeville Public Schools and New Prague Public Schools. Areas of the city generally east of County Road ninety-one lie within the Lakeville School District, while areas west of County Road ninety-one lie within the New Prague School District. The table. This table displays educational levels attained by Elko New Market residents aged twenty-five and over. According to the twenty fifteen Census Bureau estimates, over ninety-nine percent of our residents over the age of twenty-five completed high school and just about half percentage obtained a post-secondary degree. That was chapter five.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
It'll be exciting to update that chapter with the next plan. Demographics are so interesting.
Right, aren't they? I was like reading them. Community development updates.
I have an update, I don't believe we shared this at the last meeting, but Orion Companies who applied for the Park I thirty-five plat and were granted preliminary plat approval in April of two thousand and twenty-three. Preliminary plat approvals are good for one year and if they don't file final plat within one year, they expire. They have requested from the city council an extension to that approval, so that will be on the next city council agenda. Extending their preliminary plat approval and also they had an early grading permit which allowed them to do grading onsite or within the plat prior to final plat approval and they've asked, they requested an extension of that grading permit. Any other questions about Park I thirty-five or the Niagara Project? Still working towards our amended water appropriations permit before we, before that can move forward fully.
Have, has Niagara been any type of like vocal towards the delay or not really?
Not moving forward. Yeah, we have ready to meet with them probably every two weeks. Tracking, tracking, planning forward. And then the only other update is, Rich can probably update better, but we have a bid opening coming up next weekend.
Two bid openings.
Two bid openings on some street projects.
Monday at noon and at noon thirty. For the reconstruction project of the neighborhood south of the double wide. And for the mill and over, edge mill and overlay of about six miles, just under six miles of streets in the Elko New Market area.
Okay, nice.
Be a big year for us.
Yeah.
Rich.
Plus development work out at the freeway, plus Boulder Heights, possibly, at least a couple smaller. Get a lot of backhoes running around.
It needs to get done.
Yeah.
Real quick update, the city changed its IT services provider, so in case your laptops have problems, there's some software on there that lets them access it remotely. So we'll need, if you don't need your laptops in the next couple of days, we'll ask if you can leave them here tonight. Just with a scrap piece of paper, write your password on there so we can get in there and uninstall the old software and reinstall, or install the new software.
Sounds good. Anything else? Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all favor to adjourn the meeting at eight fourteen PM?